At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, April 13th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting to order. That brings us to first item on the agenda, which is roll call. Pitt here. Price.
Here.
Longton.
Here.
Hema. Mr. Shoblam. And Mr. Lundell. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. I've got a motion by Mr. Price.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Sharnell. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to number four, which is the approval of the minutes from the January 12th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. I have a motion by Ms. Sharnell.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Shoblam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody here want to talk about something not on the agenda? All right. Hearing nothing. We'll move on to the number six, which is the public hearing for the variance Interstate Building Supply and Design. And I'd like to open that public hearing at this time. Well, Ron.
Okay.
You're the new Dave, so what's going on?
Dave the second. Good evening, everybody. The notice of public hearing for this particular issue, the request, variance request by Interstate Building Supply and Design was published as per law. If you want me to read the notice, I sure can, but basically it's a setback variance from two different sides of an adjacent to a city lot and another lot. Diagrams are in your packet. And it's behind, it's on the south side of the current Interstate Building Lot Area. And he's ultimately proposing to build a new addition to one of his buildings. But in order to do that, he needs the setback variance. Subsequent, if he does get the approval from, ultimately from City Council, your recommendation, going to City Council, he would then follow up with a request to the City of Cannon Falls for a, to purchase the Outlet A that's noted there on the diagram. So the requested, actually the hearing is open, so under the items, discussion items itself, and actually action item, is adoption of Resolution 2015-3, recommendation to City Council to approve the variance request of Interstate Building Supply and Design.
So looking at this, where they need that variance is not actually on the, so much lot that they want to buy? It's more of the one that it's kind of budding up to existing?
There's actually two variants, I think I stated that in the memo. I had to email Dave back and forth on this a couple times. The request is for the existing building and proposed addition to be located less than five feet where 20 feet is required, from the rear or the south lot line. And this assumes that Outlet A will become the property, become their property subject to council approval. And then they also need the 10-foot setback on the west side instead of the 20-foot that's Which as I look at it, the back, the west side is actually the backside of their proposed It's, if you're familiar with that area, it's, there's not much there. It's kind of a no man's land. We heard nothing from any members of the public.
Okay.
In favor of or opposed to.
Outlet A, is that consists of the entire part that goes behind the car wash and the bike trail piece that runs diagonally through there then? Everything that's highlighted on, or...
See, my understanding is Outlet A on the Samuelson surveying sheet is just that section about Lot A, yeah.
It doesn't really seem... Will it butt right up against Welch's fence then? Almost? Is that where it's going to go to?
No, I don't know the answer to that. If it goes right up to that fence or up near there? Actually, it does show, I'm sorry, that, it's 9.48 feet from the fence line according to the one diagram by Samuelson.
Basically, he's not crossing any property line there. He's just, it's just, it's going to be closer to...
It would ultimately be the city lot.
Right.
Crossing into that.
And on Welch's side, it would be, it's just closer to his.
Correct.
The line would be closer to his line.
And the city would be selling the lot to Jeff then?
That would be, that hasn't been brought forward to council at all?
What's the thought on that?
Yeah. So that would be coming forward to council if, if the setback is approved, then he would move forward with the request to City Council.
It's kind of landlocked in there. I don't know. Nobody else has any complaints about it. I don't know what kind of problems it's going to create. Really, Welch's got his stuff there. Jeff has the other little piece on the other side, so it's like, and it's not getting back too close into the residential. It's back behind him there.
Well, you guys don't have any issues to that?
No, I don't have any issues with it, other than I believe you find that his building occupies all of that Outlet A.
Okay.
So even if... I think what, what he's got marked in here or highlighted on our map shows it's labeled as existing building, and I think there's just possibly a little bit on the north side or...
South side. Either the south end.
The south end that isn't.
Yeah, it looks like 2.98 feet of that building is located in Outlet A.
Well, probably he should buy it then.
[laughing].
It's really park property. It's really city property and it's a part of the park.
Yep.
And that's how they acquired it, but during the development, why? We just had a little goal because it would have held up the whole business just trying to get that settled. And then it just became park property. Just happened, his building just happened to be on it. Well, he's got, he's pretty short of a setback.
Yeah.
Even after buying that property on that little short strip. It should be worth a, what do you say, a reasonable contribution to the park department.
Yeah, now with the building being there, I don't know. Might as well get things formalized and not have a mess later on, I would think, and try to work out some reasonable agreement, providing Jeff's in favor of that. I don't see what it's going to hurt. I don't, I don't think we really want to go in there and make him shorten the building up and create a big mess over the whole thing. Doesn't seem to me that it's worth all that.
Yeah, and one note, I'm glad you brought that up because the proposed addition actually would, would stay within Outlet A. Did bring in another plan to Dave, and I just couldn't find it in Dave's desk. But that little corner that shows up on what I would call the northwest corner of Outlet A where it extends beyond that, it wouldn't extend beyond that.
It would stay within the Outlet?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's even a plus. Yeah, then, that's even better.
Sir, any other comments on that item? No?
I'm not sure how to word.
At this...
How to word what we'd like to do, but it's...
I would move to recommend the adoption of Resolution 2015-3.
Second.
Mr. Chair, you might want to close the public...
That's what I was going to actually do. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. And then I have a motion from Sharnell and a second by Mr. Price to approve Resolution All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to discussion item 7B.
Good evening. I don't see a sign up. Steve Daboll, 129 South Elm Street, representing the Cannon Falls Area Historical Society. We were hoping to put two more murals on walls in Cannon Falls this summer as part of a long-range plan. These very possibly could be the last two murals. But after working with the artist, we visited with some building owners and businesses and located two walls, but after getting the quotes from the artist, we don't have the ability to finance two murals. So we're down to one mural that we're hoping to paint on the west wall of the post office. And one of the things that we're doing here tonight, this isn't an official meeting, we sort of got to get an okey-dokey so that when the grant gets let, and I've written the grant, that we can have the open meeting and proceed with it. So there's nothing official tonight, as I understand it. But just for the folks at home, and I don't know, oh, [laughing], I had a 50/50 chance on that, didn't I? And I blew it. This is how it all started about five years ago in Heartland, Minnesota. And that is a wall that is across the street from a client of mine down in Heartland. And the reason I brought this one out is I wanted to represent a wall with multiple pictures on it. As you know, the one in the law office, the stone mill mural is one photo from our collection. And the Eltoff Warehouse Building is basically one long profile photo. But there's only so many long profile photos that are worthy of doing a mural. So we're thinking of doing something like this on the post office. And that's not the best picture that was taken in the morning when the sun was from the east. When the sun is from the west, there's too many cars in the way to take a picture. And those are not necessarily the pictures that will be on the mural. Those are just representations of the concept that's been discussed. We start with 300 or 400 images, and we just start milling it down and eliminating it and having meetings with the artist and other board members. Dennis Kallo's on my board, and he's an artist. And we're down to about 30 images that reside at the historical society. We want to represent something that we have in inventory of an event or a place in the community. We're going to end up with somewhere between six, eight, or nine images on the wall, depending how it all gets put together. So I passed out earlier a packet that had some photos on it. And again, I do this as much for the people at home. That's a cherished photo in our collection. That is the first house in Cannon Falls. And I enjoy looking at it quite a bit. And we do believe that that one will end up on there. And then another one here, that's Eltoff's, or excuse me, Schofield's Drugstore and Post Office. And if you come to the museum, what you soon realize is that this door here is open. And you can see all, all the way across what we know is the ball field, which then was the mill pond and what was built on the hillside back there. And so that's a lot of fun. But we also want to get some images of some of the early settlers. So the image thing can go on and on and on and on. And so what we're talking about here is a conditional use permit to paint a mural on that wall, provided the grant comes through. And I think Dave wanted me in front of you here as much so just sort of get the bobblehead okey-dokey process on the mural.
I like the ones that are already done.
Aren't they precious? They're precious. The purpose of the murals were multifaceted, from a position from the historical society, museums, places that display art are having a harder time getting people to come to the museum in this age of busyness and, and technology and stuff. So we've developed a process of maybe going out into the community. We were able to raise enough donations locally for the mural on Brewster's, which is precious beyond belief. And there'll be a dedication on May 9th. There's going to be a motorcycle poker run and then a little bit of a fundraiser. So it's not quite done. There's some names that have to be painted on that mural. We know who each one of those people are. What I enjoy more than anything is I knew Clint Lundberg as a very successful businessman when I was a young kid. And Clint Lundberg's a little boy sitting on the handlebars of the bike that would be second from the right as you look at the mural. So that's a lot of fun. In fact, I guess I got, again, for those at home, I don't know if they can see that, but we know everybody that's in there, so we're going to have a lot of fun with that. The, as something for down the road, doesn't need to come out. The other wall is Family Salon. I've visited with the owners of the building and the occupants of the building, and they're very excited about doing something. We've had quite a few talks, boy, I didn't realize that would be quite so small, with the artist. And what we have here that's not very visible, and, oh, I was going to hand some stuff out for you guys. I wasn't sure if I was going to talk about this mural, but it was our hope to have done this one this year. And when we had our annual meeting, we had a gentleman named Jeff Jarvis come and talk. He's been doing very deep research on all the mills of the Cannon River Valley. And he paused in his presentation one time and said how lucky we are in Cannon Falls to have these murals that represent sort of the heart and the soul and the life of the community, and we can look at those people. And it's sort of touched me a little bit. And we had an event in Cannon Falls that would probably rival 9/11 in New York, and Cannon Falls burned down to the ground, mainstream. And four or five years later, I'm not the historian guy, I wish that was here, but it happened a second time. The first time, they did not vote a fire department. The second time, they did. Dennis Kallo likes the fact that one councilman still decided not to vote for a fire department after the second fire. So we won't talk about that guy. And so here we have an image of Cannon Falls burned out, and it's very moving. If you want to come down to the museum sometime, we have a very large image of that. And then this here is an image of our fire department in their uniform in front of the fire hall, which is now the museum. And it may move around a little bit, but really looking forward to putting that on that wall. So really, guys, gals, that's all I have for you tonight, is I don't even think they have to vote on anything or do anything, just get an idea of what's going on. The grant had to be submitted, oh, first, second, third, or first of this month, and we delivered the grant. And I think we have fairly high probability, but we won't know until they say yes. And if they do say yes, the earliest the artist could start painting on it would be sometime June 1st, first week in June. But I expect him to start showing up around 4th of July or just after. On the post office mural, we've slated our capstone celebration for the, I think 15th is a Saturday in August. And we're going to have a celebration down there with that mural. But wow, six or seven or eight pictures from the history of Cannon Falls, people that walked before us. No more questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And he's right, there is no action being requested at this time.
That brings us to number 7C, which is initiate rezoning of former hospital sites.
Okay, that item fairly straightforward. Dave actually is asking the planning commission to initiate the rezoning of the hospital site that, it's the site or the block that the hospital's on, the hospital or the old hospital, obviously. And the houses just to the north of that on that same block, and then the north half of the block to the south of the hospital itself. So it's a block and a half, changing it from residential business to R2 to accommodate housing that'll take place. Mayor will be donating two of the lots, two of the single-family lots to the housing initiative. And then they, they're working with somebody else on the other two lots right now. You know, Habitat for Humanity is an interest in one of them, I know, but perhaps both. This just starts that, just a motion to start the process. The hearing would be May 11th at 6:30.
So moved, I moved to initiate it.
Second.
I've got a motion to initiate rezoning of former hospital site by Mr. Shoblam and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number eight on the agenda, which is planning commission member comments. Well, hearing none, that brings us to number nine on the agenda, which is adjourned.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Price.
Second.
And a tie for second. Give it to Mark. All right. Mr. Longton, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.